All right, not seeing anyone. We'll move on to item five, approval of the minutes from the January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen Common Council Meeting. Questions, comments, motions?
I'd like to move approval.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen Common Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion is approved. Next up, we'll have Mayor's Business. As you know, we have a meeting on, a meeting on open meetings law at eight P. M. after this meeting. And so, we're gonna try to rush through and get this one done. Although, we are in a hurry, I do wanna to send a shout out to the Public Works Department and all the people keeping our roads clean and clear. The ones I saw today look good. I know it's been a busy week and it's, it's gonna be rough through the end of the week for everyone. So, I just, just wanna to, to send a shout out to that as well. The, and I also want to apologize for the late notice about garbage pickup being delayed today. Theron was, the Public Works Director wasn't notified till four A. M. We didn't get the message out as fast as we would've liked. It has been stressed to Waste Management, who we contract for our services, that they need to give us more notice and we're looking into getting an automated system where people can just get an email and then they'll know and that we won't have to try to rely on Facebook and press releases and everything else. So, we are trying to improve things. And that is all I had. Next, we'll move on to announcements. Alder Gaskell.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to publicly say I've asked the Mayor to see if we can leave the senior center and/or the library open on Wednesday so that we have effectively a warming shelter for people who might need to go somewhere and be able to warm up. So, I expect that we will find out tomorrow whether or not it's possible and put it out on Facebook and let people know.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing it up. Other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the Public Works Police and Fire employees for the work during the, the winter weather emergencies. I heard many good comments on their performance, especially the, the roads today. I've heard a lot of good comments regarding that. This upcoming week will be extremely cold, so residents need to pay attention to children and pets. Please also check on elderly neighbors during the, the very cold spells. Wanted to let Council know, Mayor Diaz and I met with State Representative Pope and Senator Erbach's, Urbanbox's office on January fifteenth to begin discussions on potential legislation regarding, legislation that would allow us to make any additional corrections to the, the T. I. T. valuation errors from the twenty eighteen taxes that we can possibly do in twenty nineteen. So, discussions will continue on as, as legislation moves forward and we'll keep, Mayor will keep everybody updated on, on those legislation issues. That's all I had.
Thank you. Questions on the Administrator's Report? Alder Cronin.
Was there any update with the negotiations with the assessors?
We have been negotiating and we are very close to a final contract and we're hoping that tomorrow we'll be able to resolve some of the language issues that we've been having the last couple of days.
And did that include a reduction in the costs that they were charging us?
Yeah, it, it includes a cost that, because we, we went with a, the process to, to do the reevaluation, revaluation every other year, it has, it's consistent with, it's, it's less than what was presented in the bids because of that. So, and the, the price has not changed, it's just the language within the, the contract that we're negotiating right now.
Any other questions? Just to clarify one thing about the meeting with the State Representatives, the, the idea would be potentially to do a credit or refund based on the error. However, as you know, the, the state legislative process is a long and arduous process, so I don't wanna make any promises, 'cause it's not on my hands, but we are working on it and we're trying to get it fixed for people. With that, we'll move on to the Engineer's Report.
Thank you. For the, I'll, I'll just give updates on a couple of active projects. A lot of them are obviously on hold with the weather right now. For the well six pumping station construction, the contractors pressure tested the water main that was installed in early January. The water main is now available to provide the well driller with water during the drilling process. Sanitary sewer installation will commence once the permit is issued by the D. N. R. And for the fireman's park splash pad, the contractor has installed the sanitary sewer, begun installing the storm sewer, and continues to work on the building shell. That's it, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Questions on the Engineer's Report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item ten, Committee's Report. Alder Kemp, if you could do the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by making a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of six hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, Alder Kemp.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just for the sake of discussion, we had a couple of things of note. First of all, there was a, a payment of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for continued payments towards the fireman park improvements. We also had sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars for onsite training for our new B. S. and A. software. And then finally, I believe there was one larger payment here for well six, so Madison Metro Sewer District Well Six fees in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and twenty cents.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion passes. Alder Kemp, anything further?
That's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Public Safety and Welfare Committee, Alder Ricky.
Thank you. I'd like to, under item ten B. one, I'd like to move approval of a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B wine license application from Dale Nichols for the Verona Area Community Theater for February seventh, eighth, ninth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, Alder Ricky.
The explanation is that the Verona Area Community Theater is requesting a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B wine license to serve beer and wine at their performances of The Odd Couple on those dates, February seventh, eighth, ninth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. A licensed bartender will be at the bar at all times.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B wine license as described by Alder Ricky, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Ricky.
Thank you. Item ten B. two is move, I move approval of an intergovernmental agreement to continue a police school liaison officer program.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, Alder Ricky.
This agreement extends the operation of a police school liaison officer program in the school district for one-year period beginning on July first, twenty eighteen.
Thank you. You have heard the description of the motion? Questions, comments? I'll just say, I think it's great that the, the deal got done and, and we hope to get it done sooner next year. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the intergovernmental agreement to continue a police school liaison officer program, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Ricky?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Plan Commission, Alder Gaskell.
Yes, thank you. Item ten C. one, excuse me, I'd like to move approval of ordinance number nineteen dash nine-three-seven approving the annexation of thirty-two point one-zero-five acres of land located at twenty-one fifty-nine Range Trail.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, Alder Gaskell.
Mr. Sayer.
Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. The next two items on the agenda are both related to each other and they're in relation to the purchase of the Purple Cow property. That is a land acquisition that we're in the process of completing and hopefully closing on in February jointly with Veridian Homes and that would be for the future Public Works site. As part of that closing process, we're requesting two minor, or one minor amendment to the motion or to the approval of the annexation ordinance and a minor amendment to the, the resolution approving the C. S. M. for the project. And that condition that we wanna change in the annexation ordinance is to modify that so that the annexation is subject to the terms of the addendum to offer to purchase upon the city and Veridian Homes acquiring the property. The language we currently have, have in there is creating some legal challenges for both the city and also the other parties. And by changing this, it would just give us more flexibility at the closing and allow the closing to move a little more smoothly. So, it's a minor change, but we wanted to come forward with that and just amend the language actually in the annexation ordinance so we wouldn't have an issue raised at the closing or, or by Dane Colony when we submit the, the ordinance.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Touche.
Excuse me, I have a question. I'm sorry, this seems a little sideways here, but taxes. If I remember right, when we annex a property, the property taxes that property generates stays with the town for an extended time, is that right?
By state statute, we have to pay the town five years of taxes upon annexation. So typically, when a developer requests that, we, we pass that cost through the developer. In this case, the city will have some burden and kind of paying that for the next five years. I know Mr. Jacobson has, is aware of that and he's already budgeted that money in the acquisition costs, but since this annexation is occurring in nineteen, we won't have to pay that at least for another year, so it's being pushed back an additional year.
So, does, if the city owned property and the town, would we be paying property taxes to the town?
Nope, we're exempt. So, once a municipality or nonprofit acquires land, there are no property taxes generated.
So, is it more appropriate for us to buy the property first and then annex?
It's part of our agreement with the town. We, we said that we would do it this way and pay them five years of taxes. That was one stipulation the town insisted upon with our boundary agreement that, they've had some cases, not with Verona, but with, with Madison, where Madison has bought the land and then annexed it to avoid paying the taxes or intentionally, or unintentionally, and that's created some issues for the town. So, as part of this, we've, we've spoken with the town and it was, you know, in the spirit of that agreement to kind of not do what Madison did to them.
No, that's fair. I, I just wanted to-
We could.
-fully understand it.
We could do it, it would create, it would ruffle some feathers in the town.
So, this is, yeah, this is in good, yeah, good neighbors.
Correct.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number one-nine dash nine-three-seven approving the annexation of thirty-two point one-zero-five acres of land located at twenty-one fifty-nine Range Trail, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. This is related to C. one, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number R. dash one-nine dash zero-zero-six approving a certified survey map to create three lots at twenty-one fifty-nine Range Trail.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Second by Alder Cole, Alder Gaskell. Mr. Sayer.
So, once again, this is just to amend a condition within the previously approved resolution and that amended condition will help accommodate the closing process and what that condition will say is the C. S. M. becomes effective upon the annexation of the property. So, the property will be annexed, we'll have a C. S. M. recorder right behind the annexation and it makes the closing a lot cleaner, because we'll have these three parcels that we know what Veridian is acquiring, we know what the city is acquiring, and from that point forward, then the Platts can be recorded as well with what Veridian is looking at. So, this makes it a lot cleaner for all parties involved. So, it's not changing the substance of the resolution, just changing the condition that we initially put on it.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution R. dash one-nine dash zero-zero-six approving a certified survey map to create three lots at twenty-one fifty-nine Range Trail, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Plan Commission?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to Public Works Sewer and Water Committee, Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making a motion, our item ten D. one, I'm making a motion to approve a professional services agreement with Denafrio Kotke and Associates for Project twenty nineteen dash one-zero-seven, Meister Stormwater Facility dredging.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, Alder Touche.
This consulting services agreement is to prepare permits and construction documents for the maintenance of the Meister Stormwater Facility, which include field survey, construction documents, permits for, and permits for construction. Total estimated fee is not to exceed nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving a professional service agreement with Denafrio Kotke and Associates for Project twenty nineteen dash one-zero-seven, the Meister Stormwater Facility dredging, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes, Alder Touche.
Next up, item ten D. two, I'm making a motion to approve a professional services agreement with A. E. Com for Project twenty nineteen dash one-zero-eight, the twenty nineteen Stormwater Services.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Second by Alder Ricky, Alder Touche.
This consulting services agreement is to perform the following tasks, which include stormwater permit administration and perform dry weather monitoring. Total estimated fees are not to exceed eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you for that explanation. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving a professional services agreement with A. Com for Project twenty nineteen dash one-zero-eight, the twenty nineteen Stormwater Services Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
Nothing.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to ten E., Economic Development Commission, and who's handling this one?
I think I would.
Alder Kemp.
First, I don't gotta make a motion to adopt the resolution R. dash nineteen dash zero-zero-seven approving a loan agreement with Seventeenth Radish L. L. C. doing business as Treehouse Programs for an economic development loan in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
I think it was Alder Journey, it was close. Alder Kemp.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you well know, we, we've, we've come in to try and help small businesses in the Verona area develop, particularly in the downtown area, but not limited just to that area. We received this loan, the Economic Development Sat, Commission sat down, reviewed it in detail and we felt this was a reasonable amount to give to this business. I reviewed the curriculum, it's actually quite interesting, I was impressed thoroughly with what they have. I know a lot of people in the area concerned about the number of, numbers of daycares, but this is completely different than that and I think it would be a good addition to the city, something that I would consider sending my children to actually, so.
Thank you for that explanation. And just to add, as a, a member of the Economic Development Commission as well, I think it's a great business, they put on great programs and I think, I mean, this is, this is, you know, like example A. of why we have this program. So, I, I hope, I hope you guys approve it. Any further discussion? Alder Touche.
Ken, what have you, I'm not spun up on this completely, what, what are they doing that's requiring the additional loan?
What are the, well, actually, she's here right now, if you wanna speak with her, but-
If the applicant, if you would make sure the mic's on and could introduce yourself.
I'm Alison Plummer, I'm the owner of Seventeenth Radish and we are preparing for renovations at a new building for our business at two-zero-one East Verona Avenue, so it's the two-story brown building right across from Clinky Cleaners. It's been unoccupied or partially occupied for some time and we are ending our lease at our current facility up on Kimball Lane, so we are looking to kind of create a new home base and flagship facility for what we do. And as the folks who are in the Economic Development Committee meeting reviewed our plans in more detail to understand the, the unique format that we offer, which is more of a social, peer-to-peer, club interaction type of experience than a daycare. So, we are doing programming that's primarily club and camp format, classes, and most of our patrons use us on a limited hour basis throughout the week as more of an extracurricular type of experience for their kids. So, we'd be using the funds as a portion of the cost to renovate the facility, so we'll be doing some upgrades, lighting, flooring, plumbing, some exterior signage, cleaning the building, just some general improvements there, which are set to take place Monday, starting Monday.
Is this a building you own or will be owning or leased?
We have an option to buy in our lease, so we are leasing it currently. We have an option to buy for any point in our five-year lease and so we hope to exercise that once we've established ourselves in the building.
So, I'm, I'm just looking at it on Google Maps, doesn't seem, it's mostly indoor activities, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you. And, and just to add, this is a, as, as far as monetary costs go, this is relatively small amount, cheaper than T. F., and it'll help improve kind of the downtown core. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution number R. dash one-nine dash zero-zero-seven approving a loan agreement with Seventeenth Radish L. L. C. doing business as Treehouse Programs for an economic development loan in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item eleven, Old Business. This is discussion and possible action regarding the, any permissible action regarding the fire chief's performance and evaluation in fire chief contract. Don't have any statements to make in, in, for the public session, this is just a continuation of the improvement plan for the fire department and I'm wondering if someone would like to make a motion to go into closed session. Alder Cole, unless people have other questions?
We want to combine.
Our attorney's here, can we? Kyle?
Longest prepared in argument.
Could, could we do both going into closed session motions together or should we do them separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Since it's the same wording, I can just, I'm gonna need to read it twice.
Read it twice?
Read it twice.
Yeah, okay. Alder Cole.
Making a motion to go into closed session, our discussion on any permissible action regarding fire chief performance and evaluation in fire chief contract. The Common Council may convene in a closed session for discussion and permissible action regarding fire chief performance and evaluation in fire chief contract as authorized by section nineteen point eight-five, parentheses, parentheses, of those constant statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. And section nineteen point eight-five, parentheses, parentheses, E. for deliberation of or negotiation for public, for purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conduct of other specific public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Common Council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed section, session.
Motion, motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second in by Alder Kemp. We'll take a roll call vote for this one.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Thank you. Alder Cole?
Making a motion to move in a closed session regarding discussion and any permissible action regarding city administrator performance and evaluation and city administrator contract. The Common Council may convene in a closed session for discussion and permissible action regarding city administrator performance and evaluation and city administrator contract as authorized by section nineteen point eight-five, parentheses, parentheses, C. of those constant statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. And section nineteen point eight-five, parentheses, parentheses, E. for deliberation of or negotiation for purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conduct of other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Common Council may reconvene in open session to discuss, discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. A second by Alder Gaskell, this will be a roll call vote.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, we are in closed session and the door can be closed now. Thank you. And with that, we are in closed session, and the door can be closed now.
We are back in open session. And we took no action on either item, although we did have good discussions and when there we do take action, there'll be a public announcement or when there's news to report. With that, we'll move on to item 12, new business, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the operator licenses.
Thank you, I need a motion please to approve the operator licenses as presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, all those in favor of approving the operator licenses say aye.
Aye.
All those no, and that motion passes, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, I think, all those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
All those no, and we adjourn, thank you, and sorry we took a little bit longer, we will begin the committee of the whole as soon as we can get set up.